All right, Mr. Secretary, if you could take a roll call for attendance, please. Mr. Moses?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Daru? Ms. Berkmeier? Mr. Venatili?
Here.
Mr. Richards is here. Ms. Knox?
Here.
And Mr. Green?
Here. All right, uh, you guys have a an agenda in front of you, so we're just gonna work our way down like we typically do. And the next item up on that agenda is our Student Congress Oath of Office, and then we will give him the floor to uh to uh give us his current update. So if you want to meet me out front there, sir, we'll get you sworn in.
I, Nathan Farley, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States. I was gonna say repeat after me, but uh please repeat after me if you remember what I just said.
I, Nathan Farley, solemnly swear to support and to support Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And to faithfully discharge the duties of the office of student board member.
And faithfully discharge the duties of student board member.
In and for the school district of Anchor Bay.
In and for the district of Anchor Bay, state of Michigan.
State of Michigan, for in the best of my ability, to the best of my ability. Congratulations. We'll get one at the end of the year, we'll see how much we.
It's like being president.
Yes.
Yeah, you look great here for the first time. Yeah, you, you are.
Swearing in on outside the counter, so.
Nathan, I'll send these to Mr. Jankowski and he'll get them to you. Okay.
All right, as I mentioned, uh, without further ado, uh, you're up, sir.
Good evening. Today we held our first meeting of the year, and I want to express my serious gratitude for the opportunity to serve as a student representative to the Board of Education. It's truly an honor to represent my peers and share our voices. I'm excited to engage in discussions with all of you and contribute to our school community this year. Thank you for this amazing opportunity. I have the following building updates to share with you this evening. So from Lighthouse, on Halloween, students, on Halloween, students will participate in the Halloween parade. Students dressed up in their costumes will parade around the bus loop through the building and through the building. The Laker Leap Walkathon took place in September twenty seventh. Students walked around the middle school north track to raise money for the parent teacher group. Lot, the Lottie representative was not, was absent due to field trip. At Great Oaks, students participated in the Feed the Bay food drive and collected one thousand eight hundred and twenty mac and cheese cups. Harvest Fest was held, held on October eleventh, and there was, there were Halloween themed games, a haunted music room, and yummy snacks. At McCott's, a book fair was held the week of September ninth with record sales. The students enjoyed Free Popcorn Day on October eighteenth, and every student was provided with a free popcorn snack. The Back to School Bash was held on August twenty eighth, hosted by Pastor Laren from Watermark Church. Attendees enjoyed a fascinating and enter- entertaining comedy juggling show by Craig the Crazy Juggler. Students at McCott's participated in the Feed the Bay food drive by collecting fruit cups. At Ashley, students participated in the Feed the Bay Backpack Food Drive by collecting one thousand six hundred and sixty seven mac and cheese cups. The annual Boobash, uh, the annual Boobash, a Halloween themed party, is how scheduled to be held tomorrow on Thursday, October twenty fourth. There will be Games, a bounce house, and the October A- Anchor Bay Food Truck. The annual Truck Trunk or Treat Event at Mc- Naldrit was held last week on Friday, October eighteenth. The Anchor Bay Food Truck was all, was there along with over five hundred students and de- thirty-five decorated cars passing out candy. The students participated in the Food Feed the Bay Food Drive and collected more than one thousand six hundred and fifty Chef Boyardee Cups. At Middle School North, on September twentieth, sixth grade students enjoyed their first school dance. The sev- the seventh and eighth grade students Hollywood themed dance was held on October eighteenth, which even included a paparazzi. The annual Sailor's Troll fundraiser was held on October fourth, which raised twenty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven, thirty cents. At Middle School South, November eleventh, Veterans Day, students, that's on Veterans Day, November eleventh, students are encouraged to wear red, white, and blue to honor our nation's veterans. The annual Pirate Prow fundraiser was held and raised twenty-seven thousand dollars. At Anchor Bay High School, the Kindness Week will be held November eleventh through November fifteenth. So October Donation Drive is being hosted by Key Club, and they are collecting sock donations for local homeless shelters. The week of homecoming, there was a lot of festivities to include the annual Powerpuff Football Game, which the seniors won, and the ninth grade class won the float building competition. The annual staff tailgate was held with the food, with the food catered out of the Anchor Bay Food Truck. This year's event was attended by more than two hundred staff members and included a performance by the Anchor Bay Marching Band. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity.
Well, thank you, Mr. Farley. I was kind of looking at Mr. Richards when you're giving us those numbers. That's a lot of money. That's a significant amount of money to raise. That's, that's really awesome. Guess I wasn't prepared for that. Um. All right, moving on, item D, approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented to you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moses, supported by Ms. Knox. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a roll call.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Miss, uh, Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeier?
Yes.
Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item E is an audit presentation, uh, discussing the audit from fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My presentation up there? I'm somewhere in there. You're doing a much better job than I would as a camera operator. All right, wonderful. Um, so as previously mentioned, um, I'm here to present the two thousand twenty-four fiscal year audit for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'm gonna turn it on, let's switch on the lights.
Uh, you are a smarter person than I am, Patrick. My name's Dan Merritt. I've been the Audit Manager for the School District Audit for the last two years. Also included on this slide are my boss, Olive Bedford, who's the Signing Principal on the District's Engagement, and Brendan Burns, who uh does a great job of leading my uh engagement team on the District's Audit. Uh, tonight, we're gonna do a brief overview of the audit results, focusing only sort of on the very high level audit results. We did a much deeper dive during Finance Committee. Um, first off, I want to run through the quick board communications, things that we're required to talk about as part of each uh audit that we deliver. First off, uh, what was our opinion on the financial statements? An audit is not an investigation of fraud. It's an examination of the district's financial reporting for the year, which comes in this wonderful uh bound book of almost a hundred pages. Um, are, we issued at, on October fifteenth, an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. What that is, this is called a clean opinion. It basically means that the board and users of the financial statements can rely on the financial information presented therein. Um, during the year, no new accounting pronouncements were adopted, which is relief for all of those working on the financial statements. Enough to, enough, enough things to worry about during an audit than to have to implement new standards. Um, we are also required to review any accounting estimates made by management. As part of the audit, certain portions of accounting require estimates to be made, uh, which rely on underlying inputs. We reviewed all of those estimates and deemed them reasonable. Uh, number four, there were no difficulties encountered during the audit. This time, I'd like to give a brief uh, appreciation to the district's finance staff who worked very, very hard on the audit. Rob and Todd, Tracy, and Renee all work closely with us to make sure that the audit gets done on time and that all the records presented to us are correct. Uh, everything that we asked for was provided. All of our questions were answered. Uh, number five, no material misstatements were noted during the audit, and also no uncorrected misstatements were noted. Uh, sometimes districts will have uncorrected misstatements which are below the level that we require to be corrected. No adjustments of either kind were noted during the audit. Finally, there were no material misstatements, no significant deficiencies, and no other matters noted during the district's audit. So if an unmodified opinion is a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion with no findings of any kind is maybe a squeaky clean opinion. So the district had an excellent audit again for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, moving on to the single audit, ever since nineteen eighty-four, governments, including school districts, have been required to have one single audit of all of their federal grant funding, uh, during which we, as the auditors, are required to select major programs to test based on risk, which includes how large is that program, how long has it been since that program has been audited? This year, we audited the Special Education Cluster, which is also known as the IDEA uh Grant Cluster, noting no issues. So another clean year of grants audits for the district. Uh, moving on to some brief financial analysis. Generally speaking, a district wants to have fund balance in its general fund of approximately ten to fifteen percent. Um, so we usually measure fund balance in one of two ways. It's either as a percentage of total expenditures or in a measure of months of total expenditures. And ten to fifteen percent equates to about two months of fund balance. As uh Todd brought up earlier in Finance Committee, uh, it's, this is important, especially for school districts, because you go two months between your August and your October state aid payment. So having at least two months of fund balance, roughly fifteen, sixteen percent, is a great thing, because it means that you don't have to engage in any short-term borrowing for cash flow purposes, and it also provides additional resources for unpriced expenditures. Uh, on this slide is a ten-year history of the district's uh fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. You can see that for the last five years, the district's fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures has continued to climb. This was, represents very prudent and careful fiscal management by both the board and by management. Uh, means that the district has budgeted carefully and continued to add to the bank of savings. Um, on this slide, this gives our other measure of general fund ratio, which is uh how many months of expenditures could you cover out of fund balance? Basically, how many months could you go for if you had no new money coming in? And you can see that this year, the school district topped that sort of two-month baseline for the first time. This is great, because this means stability for the district's finances. So not only is the district continued to have clean audits, but has stable financial results as well. And then just some brief discussions of where uh funding is going in the state of Michigan over the next year. Uh, there was no new foundation allowance increase, which is the per pupil amount that the district receives for its audited pupil count. Um, instead, the state has start, instead of increasing revenue for districts, has started to lever back some of the contributions required to the district's uh pension OPEB funds for staff uh benefits. So you can see that they're sort of ratcheting down that uh unfunded accrued liability percentage from seventeen percent to about uh eleven percent, just less than eleven percent for this year. So what does that mean overall? It, well, the governor's office thinks that this will equate to about a four hundred dollar per pupil increase and about a four point two percent increase as compared to what the foundation allowance that you could have gotten instead. Uh, that won't be necessarily true for every single district. Of course, that's an average sort of across all districts in the state. Some districts, depending on the tenure of their teachers and how their salaries versus benefits balance out, will see a larger percentage increase. Some of them will see a slightly smaller percentage increase. So the uh, what is the underlying sort of, of purpose here? It's that in, when you're thinking about budgeting going forward, you'll be thinking about the levers that go into the expenditure control as opposed to new additional revenue. Um, and finally, I think that concludes my presentation, but I'm more than happy to take any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Any questions from anybody on the board? Hearing none, I think you're off the hook.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us up to Superintendent Jankowski's uh monthly update.
Just wanna walk you through, um, again, focus on the bond. So this is a good time as we're kind of phase three is uh starting construction to kind of go through phase one.
So we're moving on through, so those are the high school projects. We're also in the process of, um, we're out to bid right now for the two thousand twenty-five um projects, and we're scheduling some pre-bid sidewalks, so that all the contractors who want to bid can walk through and have all of that in place. So milestone dates, this kind of tells you where we're at. Um, we're looking at, we're working on the punch list, so that's been after hours on weekends. We have the additional flooring going in for the culinary arts corridor. I'll show you some pictures in a second. The front office glass replacement, those are some windows going in, so we'll have that going in as well. Um, the addition of interior glass, that'll be going. Um, we did the chiller last week as well. That was a huge, like, project involving some cranes. I'll show you some, kind of a picture of that. And then kitchen equipment is being delivered, and that will be going in for the restaurant. So here's some pictures. This is the welding area. So picture on the left is the actual workshop area for the welding. That's where the welding booths, which we'll talk about later. It'll be on the end, that's what you'll approve today, is the equipment to start going into that. They ground the floors down as well to polish those. Those will be polished concrete, and on the right is the classroom. Then this is the hallway that adjoins the new addition. So a picture on the left is from the current high school, back into that hallway. The picture on the other end is from outside the restaurant down that hallway, so it's ready for flooring. And there'll be, um, it's painted already. They'll be putting in flooring and tying that all in. This is the rest of the restaurant. So picture on the left, this, you can see the ceiling has been installed. The um like greeters, um, table at the front is in place. That same thing, flooring should be going in shortly. On the right, you can see the insulation of the hood is in there and all of the fire suppression system. So the, behind that, you can see the walk-in freezer and refrigerator. The rest of the equipment, the ranges, the ovens, and everything will be going in over the next few weeks. This is the auto shop. So auto shop, again, it's painted, working on the flooring, getting all of that kind of tied. It is also nearing, um, equipment installation, that will be the other thing that you'll see from, um, the bond to be approved tonight, is all the things, the lifts that will go in, tire changers, things like that into the room. Then this was our big project for the chillers, so the, the high school's been limping or a long massive building on one chiller, and so it's been a long time coming. So basically, we had the crane out back and they replaced that whole, um, portion of that that went in, so we will be ready back when we need air conditioning again um in the spring and summer. These areas that you see, these are the um next phase. I know it's kind of hard to see on, on this, but the green areas, green area at the bottom, that's the athletic areas. Um, green area on the left, that's the counseling office. And the green area at the north end, or at the top of the screen, that's the engineering office. So that's what is currently under construction. The media center will go in, um, that will be over the summer. And then these are just pictures of as we get ready to demolish, um, the different areas. So the picture on the left is that was the old graphic design, that will be now the office area. And the two pictures on the right, temporary walls are up, and it's been gutted now for the area for the student support. So then those, it'll just be an area for students, again, if they need help, if they need tutoring, if they need anything, they can go down there. Before school, after school, during school, in order to get a lot of our, the support staff that we've added. And then, um, engineering corridor, we're kind of looking at, um, what we did through the first phase and second phase, we pulled, the lockers that we pulled out of the other wings went into that, so that they have lockers back in that area. We have this section, we kind of ran out of lockers, and um, so our whole discussion was, do we do more display cases or anything? Talked to the teachers in that wing, they want more places for kids to kind of put their things. So we're going to actually put some smaller lockers in there, uh, kind of like what we did outside the restaurant, and that'll be for welding and so on. So then they'll have a place kids can put their stuff and then change their welding gear from that, and they won't have to bring it into the classroom where it could potentially um get dirty. So that's planned for that. And then, um, we are, um, this is just kind of working through like the engineering classroom, um, and all the flooring options. So that's basically, we're going with, it's a polished concrete, so low maintenance and all of that. And this is, kind of shows you what the floor was like, so they've now ground it down. I was walking through that earlier. It's the, still have to clean some of the dust up, but looks much better than it does now. And then, we're already planning now is the, the, everything for two thousand twenty-five is out to bid right now. We are now working on two thousand twenty-six, which is now Ashley, Naldrit, Great Oaks. More phases of the middle schools, and then whatever we can pick up at the, like, any of the other buildings or any pole head projects. So we have a rough timeline here. So we're working on stakeholder input that actually starts now. We'll run that through next year, and then with a planned bid award of September twenty-five, and then, um, basically, owner occupancy will be August of two thousand twenty-seven, so before the following school year. Two things that will be, um, we're asking for approval tonight. One is the welding booth. This is a picture of what the welding booth will look like. So this is a change order. We had been going back and forth, working with the instructor, and so basically, we're asking to approve seventy-eight thousand dollars roughly in order for these welding booths to be installed. Base, going back and forth between some of the areas, um, that we visited, SC four, um, Woodhaven and all that, that have welding programs, and this is kind of what everybody agreed would work out the best. So that's the first approval that we're asking for. The other one is all the auto shop equipment. So this will include four auto lifts, one alignment rack, two tire changers, and one tire balancer. This is about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars worth of equipment for all that. So basically, we will bring some things over, but all of the major equipment components will be new, and these are all within the budget that we have set. Questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item G on your agenda, the hearing of the public. Those who wish to address the board on the agenda may complete a brief request stating their name, address, and the subject of their comments. Remarks about specific employees should be directed to them personally and not included in the public forum. Administration will follow up with concerns within forty-eight hours of the board meeting. Uh, and additionally, uh, the time allotment per board policy is three minutes per speaker. I don't have any forms sitting up here. Was there anybody that wished to address the board today? Last call. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are of recurring nature and are voted on as a single item. Any board member may request that item be removed without a vote of the board, and it will be discussed and voted on, uh, individually. The recommended action from the superintendent is that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, the minutes, the personnel report, financial reports, and the bills payable. I will entertain a motion to that effect if someone is so inclined.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Moses, supported by Mr. Vendatelli. Any discussion? Comments or concerns? Hearing none, Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeier?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Ms. Knox?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, on to, uh, well, point two, new business. Uh, the first uh item on your agenda there is to approve the audit that you were just given. Representative Raymond will present audit results to the Board of Education for consideration and acceptance. Included in the independent auditor's report is a clean or unmodified opinion, which, as he mentioned, is the highest level of assurance possible for the district's financial statements. In addition, the auditors found no internal control issues and state that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material aspects. With that in mind, I will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four audit as presented.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Moses, supported by Ms. Knox. Any comments or questions?
Just like to say how much I appreciate how much Todd and Robin and all the financial looks put into that audit. I know that's not an easy task, and it happens every year. It's a the, gotta be a hard thing to go through.
I would agree. Managing an eighty million dollar budget with having few issues is really a, a flag for not only Robin, Robin's team and, and uh, Mr. Rathbun as well. I would agree. Anybody else? All right, hearing no one else. Uh, Mr. Secretary, if you call the role to approve that, uh, presentation.
Motion by Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeier?
Yes.
Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to the agenda, uh, what you have in front of you next is a policy, a second reading, uh, and hopefully a motion to adopt that. Uh, we had the first reading at our most recent board meeting, but I will read, uh, the language again, and then hopefully entertain a motion from the board. Proposed additional language to Board of Education Policy one zero zero one. Organization and functioning of the board. Compensation. Board members will be paid a stipend as determined by the board for attendance at each meeting of the board, including committee meetings and board study sessions. To qualify for compensation, board members must attend a minimum of seventy-five percent of the scheduled meetings they are expected to participate in. The recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt the new language under Board Policy one zero zero one. To qualify for compensation, board members must attend seventy-five percent of the scheduled meetings they are expected to participate in. I will entertain a motion to that effect if somebody is so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Vendatelli, supported by Ms. Berkmeyer. Any comments, questions, concerns? Again, it's the second reading. It did go through, um, policy committee. Is there any other, anyone else want to comment?
I have a couple of questions to clarify. So in order for a board member to receive any compensation, they have to attend at least seventy-five percent of the meetings.
That is the intention of the policy.
Okay. And just for curiosity, do you know what the current pay is per meeting?
Ooh, forty.
Forty-five.
I believe it's forty-five per meeting.
Forty-five dollars.
And to emphasize again, Mr. Richards, we're not increasing the pay. The pay will remain the same as it's been since two thousand three.
Two thousand three.
Two thousand three, the forty-five dollar per meeting amount. We are just putting in the stipulation that, uh, in order to receive any compensation. For any attended meetings, you'll have to attend seventy-five percent.
Which includes your committees as well.
That is correct.
And retreats.
That is correct. Anything that I guess the board as a whole expects its members to.
Still not going to the retreats.
I know where you live, Mike. I'll come pick you up on Saturday mornings. I don't drink coffee though, so we're not getting coffee on the way here. Anybody else? Hearing none, uh, if you could call the role to, uh, approve that new language.
Motion by Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Supported by Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richards is a yes. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item three. Uh, is a principal appreciation resolution and I will go ahead, uh. I guess I need to entertain a motion before I read it, huh? Um, to, uh, the principal appreciation resolution, uh, is for, uh, for today's meeting. And, uh, I will entertain a motion to read it into the record.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, let me read this into the record then. Anchor Bay School District Board of Education Resolution. Regular meeting of the Board of Education, also known as the Board, was held at McDonald Elementary Boardroom in the district on the twenty-third day of October, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. The meeting was called to order by President Green. The following preamble and motion were offered by Member Knox and supported by Member Moses. Whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential to Anchor Bay schools in order to prepare students for success. Both during their pre-K through twelve years and beyond, and whereas principals are entrusted. With the educational development of young people and serve as educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, community builders, facility managers. Special programs administrators and guardians of various legal contractual and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers and parents to develop and implement a clear mission. High curriculum standards and performance goals. And whereas principals play a vital role in the success. Of students by creating school environments that facilitate great teaching and learning as well as continuous school improvement and. Whereas much of the success of pre-K through twelve students can be attributed to principals who act as liaison between the school and the community it serves. Ensuring that parents and the community are aware of student and school achievements. And whereas in the face of the ongoing challenges posed by the current COVID nineteen pandemic. The role of the principal is more important than ever as teachers, students and community members rely on principals for leadership and support. And whereas. The celebration of Principal's Month honors elementary, middle and high school principals. And recognizes the importance of school leadership and ensuring every child has access to a high quality education. And whereas during this month, we join educators, parents and students throughout Michigan to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership. And recognize and thank the hardworking principals in Anchor Bay schools who set exemplary. Standards of service. Now, therefore, the Anchor Bay Board of Education do hereby proclaim October twenty-four as Principal's Month. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yeah, we already did.
I'm sorry, I do. Is there any other comments, any questions? Um, sorry, it's been a long day.
I thought we did this before.
And we do every year for.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just like a blanket one we did before.
We recognize them every month, every, every year, not every month. We do recognize them every month, but this is official. Anybody else? Any comments or questions?
Could you, could you read that one more time? I think I missed a couple of parts.
I certainly can. The whole thing?
Yeah, just start from the beginning.
Enunciate.
All right, um. Is there anyone else who wishes to have me read the entire motion again? No, Mike, Micah said no. I mean, we can vote on what you want me to read again, Dom.
Should make you do it, but that's all right.
I don't think you have the votes for it, sir. All right, uh, Mr. Secretary, if you could, uh, call the role for this and see if we can, uh, get October designated as our Principal's Month.
Absolutely. Motion, Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries, uh, Mr. Richards will, uh, sign this resolution at his leisure. Feel free to read it again if you like. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Uh, parent advisory committee representative. Uh, the district's previous, uh, parent advisory committee representative has resigned and the district would like to appoint, want to make sure I say this right. Matka Barry?
Uh, yes, Ms. Matika Barry.
Matika, okay, great. Thank you. I apologize for that, uh, as the district's, um. Parent Advisory Committee Representative. Uh, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve, uh, Ms. Berry as the district's representative to the MISD Parent Advisory Committee. I will entertain a motion to that effect and then, uh, once we vote, we'll be happy to meet her.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Moses, uh, supported by Mr. Vendatelli. Uh, any questions?
Oh, we do have, Mr. Kuzma does have some information that he can provide.
Perfect. Well, if you were going to speak, Mr. Kuzmano, I expect you to bring up whoever we're talking about.
Absolutely.
You can't get away without being on camera around here.
Ms. Berry, would you feel comfortable, uh, accompanying me up to the stage after I've given this riveting speech for you? Excellent. Uh, good evening, Board of Education. I'm Frank Kuzmano, representing the Special Education Department, and tonight I have the, the. Pleasure of proposing a parent representative to adopt the role of parent advisory committee rep for Anchor Bay School District. Per the MARS administrative guidelines, each intermediate school district board must appoint. A parent advisory committee made up of special education parent reps. From districts throughout the county and it's my pleasure this evening to propose our very own Ms. Matika Berry as the PAC rep for Anchor Bay. And in doing so, I'd like to read from Ms. Berry's letter, just to give you a biographical summary and share her reasoning for volunteering for this position. My name is Matika Berry and I'm interested in the position of parent advisory committee representative for Anchor Bay School District. I started working for Anchor Bay in August, two thousand twenty-four as a CI paraprofessional at Lottie Schmidt Elementary. I have one child in the district who attends Anchor Bay High School and receives support in the CI program. My daughter is also a proud Anchor Bay cheerleader. She has received special education supports since she was in second grade and continues to benefit from I E P services. I am passionate about my role as a CI paraprofessional. Because we are able to give students a voice. We are their advocates and help them meet their needs. I have proudly worked with children of all ages for thirty years and I love what I do. I look forward to serving the Anchor Bay School District and thank you for your consideration. Um, we believe Ms. Berry is firmly invested in the community and is a worthy candidate to represent this district as PAC rep at the county level. And we're confident that she will collaborate effectively with county staff, district staff and parent groups alike. But it is also worth noting that, uh, Ms. Berry, uh, Ms. Berry is related to our very own Melvin Bailey. Is our, uh, beloved coach at, uh, Middle School South. They're in fact siblings. And, uh, Mr. Bailey was our previous PAC representative for several years in the district. So. It seems only fitting that Ms. Berry intends to take up that mantle. Uh, any additional questions?
Anybody other questions or comments?
I have one, uh, can you just walk me through, um, some responsibilities for that advisor, parent advisory committee, like, um, when the meetings are, where they meet and different? I've never really heard about it, so I'm just curious to learn.
All right, uh, so the, the composition is parents, special education parents around the county. That meet with MISD administrative representatives, Mr. Steve Berg, Mr. Justin Maholic. Um, sometimes, uh, the business department or, um, other members of the administrative team. And really they are reviewing, uh, contemporary issues in the field of special education, best practices, uh, legal updates. County resources and services that are available to special education families. The goal is to collaborate, talk about different experiences within the local districts. And then those representatives come back and communicate with our department. And it just gives us an opportunity to have a foothold at the county level, not only as staff. But as community members and parents as well. It is a great, uh, reciprocal relationship.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. So I already have a motion on the floor. Uh, why don't we go ahead and vote on that? And then, uh, if you're comfortable, you come up here and grab a picture with us. Uh, if not, that's okay too. Mr. Secretary?
Thank you, sir. Uh, motion by Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Score, Mr. Venatili?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Ms. Knox?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Careful what you wish for. All right, continue on with our new business agenda. We've got a couple of field trips that looks like we're looking for some approval on. Uh, the first one is, uh, a DECA State Leadership Conference on November seventh and eighth, two thousand twenty-four. At Michigan State University. It is a two-day, one-night conference. There'll be fourteen DECA students going with two chaperones, uh, Mr. Yono and Ms. Petron. Uh, the recommended action for administration is that the Board of Education approve the DECA State Leadership Conference to Michigan State on November seventh and eighth, two thousand twenty-four. I will entertain, attain a motion to that effect.
I will make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Knox, supported by Mr. Moses. Questions, comments, discussions? Do you happen to know if they're, are they going by charter? Are they going by school bus? They driving their own cars?
I believe it's by charter bus.
Okay. Anybody, anything else? I don't think we need to vote on that, do we? But just, we don't need to do a roll call vote for that, do we?
You can do.
All right, all those in favor of approving the field trip signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The second field trip I have is, uh, a DECA field trip as well. Uh, DECA Education and Career Pathway Conference on November fifteenth through seventeenth. Two thousand twenty-four in Charlotte, North Carolina. Twenty DECA students with two chaperones will be attending, uh, again, Mr. Yono and Ms. Petron will be in attendance as the chaperones. Uh, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the DECA Education and Career Pathway Conference. In Charlotte, North Carolina on November fifteenth through seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Berkmeyer, supported by Mr. Moses. Any discussion on this trip? I do know that they're flying on this trip. They're, they're hopping a plane. All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, a couple of, uh, award recommendations, uh, that are going to be in front of you. I believe it's a total of three. We will take on each one. Um, due to the amount of money that's involved. The first one is the time and attendance keeping. Before the board this evening is a, is an award recommendation for a district-wide time and attendance system and related implementation services. The district formally solicited bids through the RFP process. There were five vendors that responded with proposals that met the district criteria. Business Services assembled a panel to participate in the vendor selection. Including vendor demonstrations. The review of proposals and the evaluation of pricing, the team unanimously selected U K G. You, the UKG bid aligned with district goals to improve operational efficiencies with their product. UKG ready time for school. This product will deliver workforce management, giving the district the data and tools needed to streamline employees' hourly time tracking with the automated collection of time and attendance. This recommendation is for a five-year commitment, inclusive of hardware, the timekeeping software, total implementation services, annual maintenance and support services. The five-year investment is a total of one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and two thousand dollars. Broken down as follows with year one bearing the, the implementation costs. Year one is seventy thousand, six hundred fifty-eight, year two is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one. Dollars, year three is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, year four is two twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Year five, shockingly, is twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Total of that is one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. The recommended action from administration is the Board of Education approve the recommendation to move forward with UKG for the time and attendance. And related implemented. Implementation services for a five-year commitment of one hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Vendatelli, supported by Ms. Knox. Uh, this is a topic that was in front of the finance committee at our last meeting. Uh, and we looked through, uh, which, all of the proposals, which you should have copies of. Uh, and this vendor was selected as the most qualified. Uh, bidder that was matching the minimum, uh, requirements of the RFP.
Got a dumb question. Um, is this for students or employees?
It is for employees. Uh, mostly will be, uh, hourly employees for their time and attendance tracking.
Is it going to be like a time clock? Or just stamp in, stamp out type of thing?
Yeah. So I, I think, Phil, we talked about four in the high school, um. They'll, they'll be able to swipe through with the same badges they used to access the building.
Okay, um, what is our current system and what is the reason for upgrading? I'm assuming this is an upgrade.
Yeah, right now everything is paper and pencil. They fill out timesheets after the fact and so on. So this is getting us, modernizing us to an electronic system.
After the five years, will it come back to the board for a renewal? And do we know? If yes, if it's going to start off at a twenty-one, two sixty-one again, or we're not going to have to.
Yeah, more than likely, yeah. You, basically at the end of the five years, we can decide whether we want to continue with it or go out there again.
It's unlikely though, that it's going to come back at twenty-one, two after holding that price for three years. I'm sure there'll be an escalator. Yeah.
It's just projected to save us, save us money in the long run. Are we going to this to just hold people accountable?
So we talked about it pretty extensively at, at the finance committee meeting and to answer your question, yes, uh, we believe it's going to save us money with more accurate timekeeping. Um, versus, uh.
Uh, versus a pen and paper operation. Uh, the system, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Jankowski will automatically talk to our payroll system. Uh, so it's really easy. I don't wanna say a dump, but that's, it's really easy for the systems to communicate and get our people paid. Um, right now, we're currently pen and paper and probably spreadsheeting.
Yeah.
Uh, our payroll for.
And manual.
Is it, is it five hundred plus employees?
Five hundred people that we're doing it for.
Right. No, I understand all that. How's it gonna work for like overtime issues and, and maybe?
Well.
Stuff that can't be stamped in and stamped out, you know, events outside the school district.
No, well, they should be able to still, I mean, for all those things that they're doing something, they can still punch in, punch out for ninety, like nine percent of it. For those things, if it's something that's outside, then we can obviously handle that. Right, but we won't be handling a hundred percent of things now paper, pencil and manual entry. It's only.
There'll still be some room for, for manual entry.
I'm hoping we don't need much, you know, even if you're talking about a transportation person. They clock in when they start their day at the bus garage and clock out.
My thoughts are people coming in on Saturdays for youth football games. They gotta open the facilities and maybe they don't have access to a card reader at that time type of thing. Or maybe they forget because they came in and they're, they're rushed. Are they coming in emergency status or?
And I'm quite sure in the initial rollout, Mike, that it's, we're gonna have some issues where there's gonna be. You know, a period probably where we end up doing both systems to make sure they match, as crazy as that sounds, but.
No, and, and it sounds like a good idea. It just, I don't wanna get too much into the factory, check in, check out, cuz sometimes that model doesn't fit. When you got so many moving parts. And you got so many different people showing up in different places.
I think we have enough experience with the manual entry that, you know, extra things shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue. And this will really probably omit a lot of human error.
And we plan on having readers at, you know, essentially every facility.
Anybody else? Alright, sir, you have a motion on the floor. If you could uh call and roll.
Sure. Mr. Vinatelli?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Burke Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Richard is a yes. And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, the next award recommendation you have in front of you is for auto shop equipment. Equipment distributors EDI has provided pricing for auto shop equipment for the new auto shop at Anchor Bay High School. The bond team has reviewed pricing and specifications from EDI. Equipment is priced through the Sourcewell awarded contract number one, two, one, two, two, three, dash LFT. And Sourcewell awarded contract one, two, one, two, two, three, dash MRL. Anchor Bay School District has worked with equipment distributors for our current auto shop needs and have been satisfied with their product, service and support. Sourcewell's RFPs properly advertises, evaluates and wards bids. The Anchor Bay School District is a member of Sourcewell. Allowing the district to make purchases at the cooperative pricing, which has been competitively bid, meeting all purchasing requirements. As Superintendent Jan Kowski mentioned in his update, the cost includes material and labor for the following items. Four auto lifts, one auto alignment rack, two tire changers, one tire balancer, one brake lathe. Additional equipment for the new auto shop will be complete, competitively bid, and a board recommendation presented in a subsequent meeting. Recommended action for administration is that the Board of Education award the equipment distributors. The contract to provide and install auto shop equipment as stated above in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars. And fifteen cents as presented. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Burke Meyer, supported by Ms. Knox. Discussion?
First question I have, um, this is going to be used by students as part of the autos class?
Yes.
And how are they going to be trained to safely operate this equipment?
Beginning of every class, when they start at the beginning of the year, they go through all the safety um procedures. And then they have to basically pass tests on how to safely do it before they, they're allowed to kind of use that.
Okay, I assume they pass the tests and they operate this equipment, but they, for whatever reason, forget or engage in horseplay. Uh, how was, how are we gonna catch that? Uh, how many, I guess, how many uh teachers are there per student ratio in that classroom?
The, the classes not exceed, by state guidelines for CTE doesn't exceed twenty-five. We typically have um right around twenty in there, and then there's typically the teacher. And then um we'll have a para pro depending on uh the needs of the class.
Okay. Um, are there gonna be any sort of like safety audits or equipment checks before that stuff is being used?
Well, they go through um as part of the certification and then obviously as part of like the licensing of. The, you know, passing the um. In, what do you call it? In order to get the approval of the programs on ATEF certification as well as the CTE certification.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that makes sense. I mean, but before the workday starts, cuz I've dealt with people who are, for example, trained forklift drivers. And they know exactly what they're doing, but for whatever reason, they get in that day and it's a bad day and they don't realize.
You mean on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, before they start, yeah. Is there any sort of safety checks in the equipment before they operate it that day?
Well, and that's part of the safety, like thing of the check to make sure, especially when you're getting like a tire balancer or anything. So they go through that in order to make sure that, and this equipment actually. With how new it is compared to what we have now, has a lot more safety uh mechanisms than our current equipment.
Sure. Yeah, well, so just, I guess, what I'm kinda getting to, the, the concern that I have, cuz I've, I've been in autos class in high school before and kids. For whatever reason, not, not always, but sometimes like to engage in horseplay, and even though it is new equipment, it can get damaged fairly quickly. And so I would hope maybe as part of having this equipment installed, maybe as part of the classroom is that. Um, we have a checklist for each piece of equipment and before kids start to access that equipment that day, that they have a checklist that they fill out. Uh, just to make sure that all the different components of that are functioning properly before they start using it. So for example, if you have an auto lift, I don't know if they're gonna be underneath the car, but if that fails, for example, that's obviously, you know, you can see how that would be a really bad day. So I just wanna make sure that we're being cognizant, and I assume that we are, just making sure they're being cognizant of, of those sort of risky aspects of this.
Absolutely.
Um, the other good thing too is you have two, a teacher and a para, and you have four lifts. So you, you, you only gonna have four, four, maximum four cars up in the air with a teacher two to one, which is, that's pretty good too. Just.
Yeah, my understanding is that there's, to Mike's point, that, that the para, you know, they, and then the entire class also isn't in the auto shop at the same time. There may be half the group in the first period, you know, half the group in the second. They do lockout, tagout.
But you're right about the forklift too, cuz I, I drive one a daily. We have a checklist we have to fill out, make sure nothing's leaking or nothing's, there's no obvious failures.
Yeah.
And it, it doesn't hurt to have somebody, they have a, you know, just a basic. Checklist of things that are prone to fail.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I get the worker death notifications sent to my email. So it's just part of what I do in my, in terms of my day job. And so I, I see a lot of this, in terms of like, who gets hurt? Typically, two types of people. There are those who are, you know, have been on the job for fifteen years. And they sort of get lax in the safety protocols. And then there are those who are entirely new and they're not trained to recognize safety hazards. Though they've sort of like book smart, but they're not experienced smart. And so that's all. I just wanna make sure that we're, we have systems in place to. Ensure that risks are mitigated with regards to having kids learn about autos and, and whatnot.
I totally understand.
Can you walk me through the um, the Sourcewell process? Cuz I noticed like on this bid, we only have one bid, you know, one results that we can see where on the time and attendance keeping, a bid was like seven, eight, nine responses. Can you just me, you know, walk me through and why?
And Tom can walk you through it, but basically it's a source from that gets the bids for you. Because they go out and they, they have the partnerships and, and all of that in order to get bids, but Tom can give you more.
Yeah, basically what Phil said. Uh, yeah, we belong to several consortiums uh that are, go out, just like Phil said, they go out and do a lot of the bidding upfront. Um, and as long as that bidding is in line with the requirements of the state, then we don't necessarily have to, you know, kind of. Recmit to that same process. We can utilize their process. So as long as, when we become a member of each consortium, one of the things that we do pay very close attention to is. Does that fit within the requirements in the state of Michigan? Sourcewell does, and so we're able to look at those uh bids that had come back. And, you know, obviously, the vendor we selected was the winning bid, the cheapest.
Gotcha. So Sourcewell did share the, the bid results with us and, and things like that.
When, when we go, go on, we can look at the bid results and see who the bidders were, kind of what their bids looked like. And then um obviously, Sourcewell selected this as the winning bid.
Okay, thank you.
And, and what the, what works in this, like instance where you're ordering something, you're only going to order this like once, you know. Every ten, fifteen, twenty years or something. It helps us because they are actually um. You know, going out and, so it gives us that scale that you wouldn't have because we're only getting it once. And that way we can avoid being gouged on it because it's the only time they're going to and, and they're, won't try and make money. Just by saying, oh, I see your bond is this and this is what we're going to do. So it, it just gives us a larger purchasing power and, and leverage.
Yeah, and I would just add on to that. I think also um a lot of these consortiums and so forth have probably greater expect. Uh, expertise, to be frank with you, in terms of evaluating the uh bids that come in or the solicitations that are there. And I think it's sometimes better positioned to uh select the appropriate vendor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment that I noticed that EDI is our neighbor and um just down the road.
Oh.
So I am happy to give our uh business to. A neighbor.
Thank you very much for pointing that out.
Maybe they could give us a neighborly discount. I'm just throwing that out.
Anybody else? That's not Monty Hall.
Free inspections.
Alright, I think we have a, just something else, Mike? I think we have a motion on the table, sir.
We do.
If you could call the roll.
Uh, motion by Ms. Burke Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Vinatelli?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a no. Mr. Green?
Yes. Alright, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item C, uh, change authorization for the welding booths. The bond team has reviewed external change order number ten to purchase and install the welding booths at the high school. Due to the design changes in the welding lab, the team decided it was in the best interest of the district to purchase and install. The welding booths through a change order process, awarding the work to contrast mechanical, who is already onsite and familiar with the project. The cost is competitive and within budget. Cost includes purchase and installation of welding booths at the high school. This project is being funded by the twenty twenty-three bond. Recommended action by the administration is that the Board of Education approved external change order number ten. In the amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-six cents as presented. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moses, supported by. Mr. Richards. It'll come to me. Just give me a minute. It's been a long day. Any discussion?
Yeah, the first question that kind of jumps out at me, um, what were the design changes to the welding lab?
Really just the layout of how can we fit as many booths in that in order to kind of handle that? And then also getting proper ventilation, how can we connect that? So it's just trying to get all the equipment now that we made the initial kind of like layout and everything. We didn't have an instructor at that point. So then, since we hired an instructor and we got input from the instructor, we were like, okay, this would work out better for the flow of everything. And so that's, that's the basis for this.
Okay, and I saw the picture from the superintendent update. It looked like, and I'm guessing based on the picture, it may not be to scale. Is that like a five by five foot kind of booth area?
That, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, well, well, do you know what they're intending to be welding in, inside the booth? And the, I assume these are students welding.
Yep, it would be students that would be welding and it would basically, you, I mean, they're going to start with your standard, like ferrous metal and, and all of that. And then um, then as time goes by, we'll hopefully move up into more advanced things like aluminum and so on.
Okay, and I, I assume like with ventilation, obviously if you have aspirating metals, that has a chance for inhalation toxicity and all that stuff. Um, in the ventilation booths themselves, are they rated by some sort of standard to make sure that the permissible, like the exposure for the concentration of the metals being. Uh, fumed is gonna be below what would be like a threshold limit value permissible exposure limit?
Yeah, so they have basically that, they're, they're kind of rated for what you're working on. So yes, they take that all into account.
Okay, and of, of course, and so the, the kids know how to operate this equipment, make sure it's running properly while they are doing the welding. It's not just.
Yeah, and so, uh, again, all of our CTE programs, they start it, before they're allowed to touch any of the equipment, they start with the safety first.
Yep, yep.
And then um, a lot of them were trying to work into the OSHA thirty or OSHA sixty, you know.
Yeah.
As part of it, so it'll set them up for apprenticeships later on. And, but yeah, that's, we, we just, they have to do that first and then show that they can do it before they get to go into. Um, the process. And even with welding, we have simulators that they start on, to show that they could do that before they'll go into and actually use real equipment.
Gotcha, perfect. I, I'd love to learn a little bit more about it, so maybe after the meeting, I can ask you a couple more questions. So you could send me the information for that. I can review it at, you know, on my email and all that, so thank you.
Are you anticipating um same class size as auto, twenty, twenty-five?
Yeah, generally that, it's, the state sets the limits on what you have. That window will actually end up being probably smaller. It could be as small as like fifteen to twenty.
With a para or no para?
I'm sure. Um, it depends on the number of kids, but yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, sir, we have a motion on the floor, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, Mr. Green. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Ms. Burke Meyer? Mr. Vinatelli?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
And Mr. Green?
Yes. Mr. Superintendent, do we have one or two volunteer appeals tonight?
We have one.
Okay. Um, as part of our recent policy update, we instituted an appeal process for those parents who wish to volunteer or accompany students on field trips. Current practice is to hold parents to the same restrictions the state places on district employees. The appeal process will allow each parent to speak about their appeal for five minutes, and then the board will vote on that appeal. Tonight, we have one parent who wishes to make an appeal. We will call parent A. Do you wanna step up to the podium? Just please make sure your microphone's on.
Can you hear me? I'm two weeks post laryngitis, so I apologize. Um, and I am a grandparent standing up here, not a parent. Um, I have two grandchildren and coming up into the Anchor Bay School District. My grandson is a first grader at Lighthouse and my four-year-old granddaughter is at the Early Childhood Center. I'm very involved in both of their lives. Um, and in the event that my son or grand, uh, son or daughter-in-law are not able to participate in field trips. I would love to be able to participate um if asked and want to. Um, part of my long, long, long ago past crept up on me when a phone call came in a couple of weeks ago. Um, during a background check and. I was a fifteen-year-old girl uh who became pregnant. My son is thirty-seven years old now. Um, as a very young mom, I was on state assistance and went to school, went to college. Lived on my own and was working and under the threshold of the state requirements at the time, earned more money than I should have. So I was overpaid on state assistance, which resulted in a welfare fraud charge against me. Back in ninety-two, ninety-three, I was charged, sentenced, paid restitution. Went on my way, buried it in the closet and it resurfaced a month ago. Um, I'm fifty-four years old. I completed college, raised my son on my own. Um, I've worked in the legal field as a paralegal for thirty-five years now. And lived in the Chesterfield in Baltimore area for thirty years. Never been in trouble with the law. Um, so I'm just here to ask for reconsideration and allowing me the opportunity to possibly volunteer if the opportunity arose. And my son and grand, son and daughter-in-law could not. I would love to be able to. Attend a field trip with my grandkids. Um, I'm one of their caregivers. I'm with them probably forty percent of the time weekly. And as a young mom, I did not have the opportunity to, to, to attend field trips with my son cuz I couldn't afford to take off work to do so. So I am reliving those days through my grandkids. So I appreciate your time.
Does anybody on the board have any questions of parent A? Hearing no questions, is anybody? Hearing no questions, is anybody inclined to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a second.
All right, so it sounds like we have a a motion to approve the appeal for parent A uh by Mr. Moses and supported by Ms. Knox. Uh, any questions at this point or comments?
Um, can I throw out one question? I know we've kind of beat this test, but I just want to throw it out there one more time. Ninety percent of what's big said at these appeals is sent to us in written form. Is there any reason why it has to be said in public for maybe parents that don't want to? That might be a little bit shy or, or if it does get turned down, don't want it out in the middle of the public?
It, it's just the policy that how the board.
I'm just curious if maybe we can do it more anonymously. Or is it better to have them?
I think it's up to the individual what they share, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Um, that's a podium or it, you know.
Okay.
I think we, I think we'd have to take a look at the policy to see how it's exactly worded, but I'm they can appeal to the board, but I don't know if they have to appear.
They did, they did advise me of that. They advised me of the ramifications and everything that would potentially take place tonight and for my grandkids, I don't, I don't care who knows what.
So they gave.
Stand here very proud of my past and my life.
They gave you an option to either come here or send a letter um uh, to us. Was it, was there an option to come?
It was not. This was my only chance of, at an, at an appeal.
They have to appear if they're going to.
They have to appear to appeal to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any motion by the board has to be done in, in the second, so let's.
I'm sorry, what year was this? The charge?
Ninety-three, ninety-four.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I, I have one quick question. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I have one quick question. This, I guess, is supposed to anybody who knows the answer to. It's more like a legal question. Um, is there any sort of pathway for this record to be expunged if it's thirty-one years ago?
There is. I, as I said, I buried it in a closet and it's never resurfaced since, but I one thousand percent could have it expunged. It's, it's just never, it's never, I, I've buried it. But yes, I, I absolutely could do that.
Okay, uh, my, my general rule of thumb with, with these obviously is if, because we don't have as much information as a courtroom would. Uh, but judging based on now this has nothing to do with alcohol or any sort of violent act, uh, I'm inclined, especially because the event took place about at the same time that I was born. And so I, I'm, I'm inclined to just make an exception and and allow this to to go forward, uh, just based on those grounds, but um, you know, I I just think it's uh, it's one of those things that it's a struggle to uh have a clean conscious with, with allowing uh, parent volunteers to go forward, because I don't have all the information. I'm worried that if we approve someone who gives a good story, who has a lot of good rationales and, and we believe that and then something happens, then we'll, we're kind of on the hook for putting someone who shouldn't be in place uh in this sort of environment. So uh, I, I suppose it's, you know, something I suppose we could kind of think about and perhaps help uh, parents get these records expunged before they decide to come before the board and see if they want to take that option instead. Uh, but like I said, at this, at this point in time, I intend to allow this parent to volunteer.
So the only thing I'll say with regard to that, Dom, is we, we can't get into a position where we're offering legal advice. Um, and to Mike, to your point, uh, I think we probably should add this to our study session. We're going to have, uh, you know, a minimum of one new board member up here uh in February. So perhaps we could circle back around to it again and, and see if this is really how we want to handle these things.
I just think it's hard enough for the ones we approve, but the ones you don't approve that have to come out here and spill.
Are ones that are not nonviolent, non-drug or alcohol related, so.
Yeah, let's, if we could, if we could take it up in February, I think that'd be great. All right, so we have a, any other comments before we move on? We have a motion on the floor to approve the appeal for apparent A. Could you call the rolls, sir?
Sure. Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Knox?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Vinatelli?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries. Your appeal is approved.
Thank you very much. Is this something that carries me? Does this have to be redone year after year or is it? Thank you. I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on. Let's start with our uh board points of pride, uh, and I'll start with Mr. Vinatelli tonight. Nothing for us, sir. Mr. Moses?
I thought he was your point of pref. Sorry. I'm behind. I thought Mr., I thought you were going to say something nice about the guy. No, I'm just kidding. No, just uh, it was nice to see uh Nathan at the board meeting. It was good to meet him and uh see the student council representative. And again, I'd like just reiterate how much I appreciate Mr. Rathbun and um Robin and.
See you late. It's not just me.
Yes, I know. And all them with the, with the audit and uh that's, that's about it for me tonight.
Ms. Knox?
All right, everything Mr. Moses said, uh, let's uh welcome Nathan. Um, I got to meet with the Girl Scouts at Aldra last week. They were a um charming and energetic group of young elementary ladies. They did request a tire, a new tire swing because theirs is broken. Um, if any of them are watching, because they may tune into a board meeting now. Um, I've talked to superintendent about it and we are working on it. So that is how uh we went over the political process and I think they got their political science badge. Um, and also thank you, Ms. Barry, for serving um our community and our school district. I know her brother, he coached my son, so if she is even half as amazing as he is, we are very, very fortunate.
Ms. Berkmeyer? Mr. Richards?
Thank you, Mr. Green. I would like to thank the staff that helped organize the Anchor Bay High School College Night. It was a great turnout. At the Commons was full. We had over fifty colleges, universities, vocational and tech schools, even had a school from Alabama. Uh, Anchor Bay Junior Hoop starts January sixth for students four through sixth grade. If you're interested in signing up, please see Coach Seleski. October, as we discussed tonight, is National Principal Month. I'd like to thank all the principals, everything they do, day in and day out for our students and staff at Anchor Bay. The Anchor Bay Shoreliners Oct- October buffet is Wednesday, October thirtieth at Middle School South from ten forty-five to one fifteen. Ten dollars for seniors, twelve bucks for adults, and bring your appetite. I'd like to recognize Middle School North's first hour life skills class that collected twenty-four hundred boxes of cereal for Feed the Bay program. Awesome job. The Anchor Bay Relay for Life team is hosting a fundraising event tonight. If we get out on time at Texas Roadhouse, if you have time after the meeting, ten percent off. Proceed, support the American Cancer Society. It ends at ten P M. McCon's Merry Market is looking for crafting members, I'm sorry, crafting vendors. The craft fair is Wednesday, December eighteenth. Please reach, reach out to Mr. Seleski if you are interested. I'd like to thank the Anchor Bay Marching Tires for their road tour to the elementary schools. I think it's a great event that they do every year. Thank you very much. Um, Sunday, November seventeenth is Anchor Bay Acre Bay Band's fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings from noon till four. Congratulations to Anchor Bay Middle School North Captain of the Month, Maggie Galinsky. Maggie is a a lit tutor at Middle School North. Maggie has also been a wonderful addition to Middle School North. She helped so many students last year with their schoolwork in a caring, compassionate way, and she also is a coaching, she also is currently coaching eighth grade volleyball. I'd like to recognize the veterans group that took their time to go to Ashley to show fifth graders the correct way to, to fold an American flag. Thank you for your time and your service. The nineteenth annual Anchor Bay Band Auction is November second at Zucaro's. Very competitive auction. I'm not sure if they're going to be having the indoor cornhole competition this year or not. I lost last year. Um, the Anchor Bay Chess Club is looking for students to join the team. Next meeting is Friday, October twenty-fifth, and they meet every other Friday. National School Bus Safety Week is this week. The National Highway Traffic Administration is urging drivers to slow down and be aware of school buses in their community. Congratulations to the Anchor Bay Marching Tires that competed at the MSBOA Festival. Uh, they received a first division rating. I think they received a lot more ratings. I was there. I can't remember. Uh, I couldn't find what they got, but they got a bunch of uh high honors at the, at the M U's. It was great to see a bunch of schools there. Um, and that's all I have.
I too want to again thank Robin and, and Todd and their teams. It's almost an expectation that this board has now that we're going to get a clean bill of health. So Robin and Todd have, you know, keep, keep up the good work, keep plugging away. It's greatly appreciated, like I said, with an eighty million dollar budget. And then uh this week I went over to Middle School North and caught up to their sixth grade volleyball team. I believe it's coached by Ms. Van Huesen. Uh, it was interesting to see this, the sixth grade girls. It's, it's, I have a daughter who's a little bit out of high school. I don't remember all the cheering and all the clapping and the stomping of feet that they apparently do now. It's something that's new to me. My daughter played soccer and they don't do that on the soccer field unless they're stomping on somebody that they knocked down. Um, that's all girls, not just Anchor Bay girls. I wasn't insinuating that. Uh, but anyway, it was interesting to go out and, and it was just, it was actually a packed house. It was Lance Cruz, uh, Central, I believe. Uh, and I believe they beat them uh three matches to zero, games, matches. Volleyball's all new to me, so I'm just learning. Um, but anyway, um, that was my uh, my point of pride for the month. Um, board committee updates. I know we've talked a little bit about what finance went through. Obviously, a lot of what you guys saw tonight. Finance reviewed our most recent meeting. Anybody else have any committee updates? All right. All right, if we have no other updates, we actually have no other business except for moving into a closed session. So the Board of Education moves into a closed session to consider the attorney-client privilege communication under section eight, one H of the Open Meetings Act. So I would entertain a motion that the board move into that closed session to consider that attorney-client privilege communication under eight, one H of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Do we expect any, any vote after this?
I do not anticipate that there'll be a vote after this, but that's up to you guys. We do have to come back here to close the meeting.
My question was more if people should hang around or not, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, again, unless, you know, the board feels so inclined after the closed session to to meet. I, I, I personally don't, do not expect anything. It's more to receive the uh opinion of the attorney. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Call the roll for that, sir.
Uh, Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Vinatelli?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. Ms. Knox?
Yeah.
And Mr. Green?
Yes. The board will move into closed session at eight twenty-eight P M. Motion by Mr. Vinatelli. Supported by Ms. Knox. Comments, questions, concerns?
No.
Hearing none?
Lansing's for him.
Yeah, I want you to.
Can you hurry up? I do have to go Lansing.
Oh, you're going to Lansing first. All right, Mr. Green is going to Lansing. All right.
Yeah, we're ready. Motion to go back into uh session, sir.
All right. Motion by Mr. Vinatelli.
Uh, I'll second. Did nobody second it?
No, I think I already said that once, but no, Ms. Knox, Ms. Knox did.
That's what I thought.
All right, motion by Mr. Vinatelli. Supported by Ms. Knox.
Thank you. Yeah, Dyna, it's been a tell.
Oh, Vinatelli.
And we had no discussion, so if you could please call the roll to go back into open session, please.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Ms. Berkmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Richards is a yes. And Mr. Green?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right.
I will entertain a, unless uh anybody is so inclined to make a motion after our closed session.
Oh, we're back at nine thirty.
All right, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it, tell you.
Motion by Mr. Vinatelli, I support. My Mr. Moses.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. I have a lot of driving today. I do. All those in favor are sitting there saying hi. Hi, all those opposed. Motion closed at nine thirty-one.